And welcome to Gavel to Gavel, WCVW TV's complete coverage of the Richmond City Council. Good evening once again, Happy New Year. I'm Dick Harmon, welcome to a brand-new year and a new look on the city council. There are some changes from the last time we met, which was just a little over a month ago. First off, we'll try and run down some of the changes for you. The President of the Council is now Charles Samuels, replacing Kathy Graziano, who had decided she would not seek another run at the presidency, since she'd been there four years, and so she has stepped down. And Charles Samuels is our new Council President. He will be there for two years, he's from the 2nd District. Ellen Robertson remains as the Vice President of the Council. Then we get to the changes. 1st District, where it once was Bruce Tyler, is now Jonathan Blyles. He is the new 1st District Council Representative. In the 2nd District is Charles Samuels. He remains. In the 3rd District, it is still Chris Hilbert, 4th District, Kathy Graziano, now a Council Member but no longer the Council President. Then in the 5th District, we have a change, and where Marty Jewell was once the Representative is now Parker Agulasto, and he is our new 5th District Representative. 6th District, Ellen Robertson. 7th District, Cynthia Newbell, Dr. Newbell remains. Reva Trammell stays on as the 8th District Representative. And then the 9th District, where Doug Connor once was, it is now Michelle Mosby. So that is the new look on the Council that we'll be seeing for the next two years. And tonight's agenda looks like a brief one. Seven items on the consent agenda, three on the regular agenda. Let's go through the items right now and just see what we have and what we don't have tonight. Starting off with item number one, ordinance 2012-72, conditionally rezoning properties, 3320 rear trailer drive, durie drive, etc. This is from the current zoning districts of R1, which is single-family residential, and R4, single-family residential conditional, to R5, single-family residential conditional upon certain proffered conditions. This item is going to be continued until March 11th, so that will not be heard tonight. Item number two, ordinance 2012-200, special use permit at 407 South Cherry Street. This is permitting multifamily use on the property at 811 Albemarle Street for the purpose of establishing a single-family dwelling lot, and a lot to be used for surface parking. This is going to be amended tonight and then continued until the 28th of January, which will be our next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number three, ordinance 2012-211, amending and reordaining an ordinance adopted in 1986. It's authorized a special use permit for the property at 2509-2511 Wyatt Street, 2510 Bainbridge, and 65, 67, and 71 West Clopton Street. This is authorizing certain renovations and increasing the number of residents permitted in the adult care residence there upon certain terms and conditions. That one does stay on the consent agenda. Item four, ordinance 2012-212, this is directing all-way stop signs and all-way flashing lights at North Nazimah Street and Kensington Avenue, and this has been continued for two weeks till our next meeting on January 28th. Item number five, ordinance 2012-234, and this is adding a new Division 13, new section. This defines and regulates by conditional use permit nightclubs' uses in certain zoning districts. And what this paper really does, it distinguishes between what is a restaurant, what is a nightclub. That is the main purpose of this, it will distinguish between the two and then go with the additional permit situation. But that one stays on consent agenda, and I'm sure they'll be talking a little about that a bit later on. Item number six, Resolution 2012-R148, this is directing the Green City Commission to recommend, in consultation with the Department of Procurement Services, to the City Council any legislation, plans, policies, and programs imposing mandatory green standards for the construction of city-owned buildings and facilities with a cost of $5 million or less. That stays on consent agenda. Then item seven, Resolution 2012-R158, and this is approving $1,500 from the Council District Funds for the 2nd District to pay the Department of Information Technology for printing and mailing a newsletter to the 2nd District residents. Those are the items on consent. On regular agenda, item number eight is ordinance 2011-207, and this is concerning the Slave Trail Commission, and the purpose of providing no term limits apply to Slave Trail Commission members. This one is being continued until the second meeting in February, so this will be heard on February 25th. Item number nine, ordinance 2012-29, and this is a special use at 122 Tempsford Lane. This one has been continued until February 11th. And then our final item on the regular agenda, ordinance number 2012-168, this is special use at 2501 Monument Avenue. This has been around for a while, it's the purpose of a museum for architecture with outdoor events, a reception facility, etc. This is going to be continued until the 11th of February as well. So, we start off with seven items on consent, three items on the regular agenda. We are now down to four items on the consent agenda, no items on the regular agenda, no appointments or reappointments tonight. Now, citizens comment period, we have three speakers signed up so far. Valerie West to speak about chickens, Charles Willis to talk about the state of the city, and Richard Walker to speak about employment. Those are the only items we have on the speakers platform tonight. As for awards and presentations, I only have one listed, that's to Mr. Ralph White. This is to recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. Ralph White. Richmond James River Park System Manager for the Richmond Department of Parks Recreation and Community Facilities, on the occasion of his retirement after 32 years of service. And that's the only one that we have here for a recognition tonight. So that's the way it looks tonight, new looks on the city council. The seating arrangements have changed around, but I've heard there may be some further rearranging, so we won't go through that tonight. But you'll be seeing that people that normally sat where they did, some of them just aren't sitting there anymore. And of course, we have three new council members, a new council president, and we'll be seeing what goes on. We'll make it started in just a couple of minutes with the first meeting of 2013 for your Richmond City Council. I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
Hopefully I come and work tomorrow, and the panel is down, so we have to do a little bit of some of this to the streets tonight.
We can see that on the highlight last night.
It's a newbie. A newbie, I'm a teenager, I'm trying to get to the top of my life. You can clap for me when I do. I'm tired of being mistreated.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please take your seats, the meeting is about to begin. Very good, I see that we have a quorum of council members. Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Would you please begin our meeting?
Okay, we will now have the invocation, which will be done by, just a second here.
It's, I'm sorry, I have the paperwork up here, it's Dr. Alona Rogers, who's the pastor of All Saints Apostolic Church on Royal Avenue. Dr. Rogers?
Thank you.
Can we please stand for the invocation?
.......................................
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Rogers. The Pledge of Allegiance, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. We'll call Mr. Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President, all members of council are present.
Thank you. Chamber Emergency Evacuation Plan, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. The Emergency Evacuation Plan reads as follows. Upon activation of the emergency alarm system, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chambers, or the east and west stairwears outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use the elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay, 8th and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Mr. President, I would also like to make an announcement to our citizens who have signed up to speak tonight. Citizen comment period is an opportunity for persons to present comments and information to council not pertaining to any items on the meeting agenda for that evening. Persons wishing to address council during the citizen comment period are generally allowed three minutes to speak. Persons appearing before council are not allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of personal nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or addressed or questioned staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the President of Council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and further disciplinary actions as necessary, which could include barring from the attendance at future meetings of the city council for a period up to six months.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any actions to be taken on appointments or reappointments?
There are no appointments or reappointments on the agenda tonight, sir.
Then may we please proceed with awards and presentations.
Okay, we have one award, and that award is a Joint Public Service Award presented by Mayor and President Samuels, and that award is going to Mr. Ralph White. The Honorable Mayor and Honorable Members of City Council do hereby invite, in solidarity and common purpose, to officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. White, Richmond James River Park System Manager for the Department of Parks Recreation and Community Services on the occasion of his retirement in December 2012 after 32 years of service. Dedicated to public service, Mr. White reported to full-time duty with the Richmond Department of Parks and Recreation and Community Facilities on January 7th, 1980. Since then, his many titles have included naturalist, recreation program specialist, senior recreation program specialist, recreation program specialist III, and trade superintendent, all of which reflects his recognizable title as the Richmond James River Park System Manager. Mr. White is credited with bringing together many organizations, volunteers and supporters, and providing the needed leadership, vision, and hard work to transform a long-neglected area into the award-winning community asset it is today. As a testament to his outstanding commitment, Mr. White and the James River Park System has achieved numerous accommodations and awards over the years. A great example of this is the last-year Outdoor Magazine named Richmond as the best river town in the country. Mr. White has proven his dedication and support to the principles and creeds written into the founding documents of our great nation. Now therefore, Richmond City Council and Mayor Dwight C. Jones do hereby officially recognize, honor, and celebrate Mr. White, Richmond James River Park System Manager for the Department of Parks and Recreation and Community Facilities on the occasion of his retirement in December 2012 after 32 years of service, and thank him for his support for helping to make our city an even better and more beautiful place to live, visit, and raise a family. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Clerk, and we are very happy tonight to be able to share in recognizing Ralph White for your dedicated service to the city for 32 years, that's a long time. And not often do we have employees that become rock stars in their own right, and have people who bring banners to sit in our council chamber, saying, "Your service." Not often do we have employees that make their own fashion statement, and wear shorts, and D.O.F. socks, and white beers. But that's just the beginning of it, because you have done so much for conservation, you've done so much for our park system in preserving that and making it a vital part of the culture of our city, and taking us to the next level as we try to make the James River Park System a vital part of our community. We recognize the fact that you did much, much more than you had to do, that you went over and above the call of duty, you wrote manuals, you directed tours, you did so many things that will really provide the blueprint for those who are following you. And so on behalf of the City of Richmond, I join the city council tonight in thanking you so much for your dedicated service, and whenever we think of the park system, whenever we think of the river, I promise you we're going to think of you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White, you're a role model, not just to show up from Richmond to the area, but to each and every one of us, because you've embodied the one thing that I love saying, to really get something done, you can be proud of, it might take inspiration, it might take dedication, but most certainly it takes perseverance. And the work you've put in over the last 30-plus years.
To bring our James River back from being filthy to being clean has been amazing. To draw tourists down there when no one wanted to go has been incredible. And the reason Richmond was elected the best river town ever was in large part due to your conscientious and continual efforts. The City of Richmond knows your gratitude attitude, and we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I want to say, there's not much left for me to say, they've said it all, except I do miss the shorts, too. But I just went to a party for you yesterday where you had so many supporters. I've been going to the James River Park, I told Ralph this yesterday, since before Ralph was there. Well, since Ralph came, there has been a huge difference in that park. And you have taught the city not only to love that park, but to love our river and to take care of our river. And that's a legacy that you will leave to this city, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
And so you are so valued that we give commendations to many people, but this is a Thomas Jefferson Award for government service. Very few people get this award, and we are honored and humbled to give it to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. My wife has urged me to be brief, and so when the earth was formed, four billion, and the rocks and the river were formed, the fall line was created, and it is the fall line, it is nature, that has made the wonderful natural features that define our city today. The finest whitewater rapids of any city, the finest mountain biking of any city, opportunities for art appreciation, anyone seen the book about the river done by David Everett? Places for university students, places for contemplation, places for athletics, and it's all here in the City of Richmond. The finest river town in the United States. And I will have to say, this has been a great experience for me. No one, in my position as a teacher, as a field manager, has ever had the level of support that I support that I have from the community and from you, the leaders of government. I'm deeply honored for you to give me these gifts and recognition of my work. And although I am not in uniform, it's true, I'm not wearing my shorts, it is January, and I can probably no longer wear the name tag, my heart is in the city and in the park, and the recognition is that we are all people of the river. I look forward to seeing all of you as a user of the river parks. Thank you again for these wonderful, these wonderful awards. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, now we will review the amended agenda.
Yes, sir.
On the consent agenda, item number one, ordinance number 2012-72, has been continued to March the 11th.
Thank you.
Item number two, ordinance number 2012-200, has been continued until January the 28th. Item number four, ordinance number 2012-12.
Mr. Clerk, we missed number three.
Number three, I'm showing number three to retain on the consent agenda?
Yes, I just, I know it's a little different, but just so that folks know whether or not to stay, let them also know which ones are staying on the...
Oh, okay, so I was just covering the ones that were amended. All right. Item number three, ordinance number 2012-211, asks to retain on the consent agenda. Item number four, ordinance number 2012-212, continue until January the 28th. Item number five, ordinance number 2012-234, retain on the consent agenda. Item number six, resolution number 2012-R148, that is to retain on the consent agenda. Item number seven, resolution number 2012-R158, retain on the consent agenda. Going on to the regular agenda, item number eight, ordinance number 2012-207, that will be continued until February the 25th. Item number nine, ordinance number 2012-29, that will be continued until February the 11th. Item number 10, ordinance number 2012-168, will be continued until February the 11th. Okay, Mr. President, those are the items on the amended agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I will now need a motion to accept the amended agenda as read.
So moved, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Newbill. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, we're now voting on the amended agenda. Mr. Blows?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agalesta?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Mr. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell, I'm sorry. Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
And President Samuels?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're going to start with the regular agenda?
Yes. Now we will have Jean, Madam Clerk, Jean Cable, cover the motion to amend items.
We have one motion to amend.
Mr. Clerk, I don't think we're at a motion to amend yet. The only thing being continued with the motion is the amendments will be introduced at the end of the meeting, as I recall. That would be on number four, or excuse me, on paper number two, which is 2012-200?
Yes, and she's getting ready to read that now.
Item number two, which is ordinance number 2013-200, to authorize the special use of 407 South Cherry Street for the purpose of permitting multifamily use, and the property known as 811 Albemarle Street for the purpose of establishing a single-family dwelling lot and a lot to be used for surface parking accessory to a multifamily use upon certain terms and conditions. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page three, line 17, after the word "van," delete the number 18 and insert the number 12. After the word "units," insert the text, insert the text, and no more than a total of 21 bedrooms. Page three, line 19, after the sheet number A2.03, delete the comma and insert the word "and." Page three, line 20, at the beginning of the line, delete the text "and A3.02." Page three, line 21, after the word "revised," delete the text "July 26, 2012," with sheets A1.00 and A1.03 being last revised September 21, 2012, and insert the text "December 27, 2012." Page five, line 18, after the word "van," delete the number 18 and insert the number 12. After the word "units," insert the text "no more than 21 bedrooms." Page five, line 19, after the word "spaces," insert the text "in a trash enclosure." Page five, line 20, after the word "dwelling," insert the text "on the property known as 811 Albemarle Street." Page six, line six, after the comma, following the word "amended," delete the number four and insert the number two. I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as follows. Counselor Blows, will you please make that motion?
So moved.
Council is voting on Counselor Blows' motion to item number two, ordinance number 2013-200, as read, and that paper will be continued to Monday, January the 28, 2013. Mr. Blows?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Agalesta?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That amendment has been adopted as presented, and the paper will be before you again on Monday, January the 28th.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, before we go to citizen comment period, Dr. Lanier from RBHA had asked to explain the folios we received this evening. Dr. Lanier, would you please come up for one, literally for 30 seconds or less?
Mr. President, thank you very much for the opportunity for RBHA to be recognized in this way. I'm representing our board chair, who is Wayne Blanks, who is out of town. We were expecting to make this presentation on Wednesday before the Education and Human Services Standing Committee. That committee will be chaired by Councilmember Hilbert. So today, we are delighted to present you with a copy of this portfolio, which is before you, on behalf of the Richmond Behavior Health Authority Board of Directors and our staff. We're delighted to be able to support you and to be more than just a safety net for the city. I will tell you already, we have been called by a number of members of city council who have asked for support for a number of papers that you're preparing, and we are delighted to continue to provide that support. Dr. Newbill, as you know, is a member of our Board of Directors, and if I may, I'd like to take the opportunity to dedicate this presentation on behalf of one of our board members who unfortunately passed away at 11:10 today. That's Mr. Sam Lillett, who is a longtime member of the community, Richmond Memorial Hospital, and also Community Hospital in Churchill. He's been a longtime member of the Richmond Behavior Health Authority Board and also a foundation, so I'd like to ask you to accept this on behalf of Mr. Lillett, who unfortunately passed away after a long illness today. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Lanier.
Yes, sir.
Our condolences, thoughts, and prayers go out to the family, friends, and colleagues of Mr. Miller. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is citizen comment period. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. The first speaker tonight is Valerie West.
Good evening. President Samuels and members of council, my name is Valerie West, and I'm a Richmond resident in the First District. I'm here tonight representing the group CHICKENS, C-H-I-C-K-U-N-Z. We are a group of folks who have been working to reform the city's chicken laws to allow residents to maintain a small flock of hens. Most of council are familiar with our plight and the over 1,100 hand-signed signatures from Richmonders on our urban chicken petition, which led to the study by the CIO's office, which recommended allowing urban hens with restrictions, and also the ordinance coming up for vote on January 28 to allow a small flock of four hens. So this is mostly for the new members of council, Mr. Blows, Ms. Mosby, and Mr. Agalesta. If you have any questions or concerns regarding urban chickens or would like to visit an urban coop, please feel free to contact us. And I have some information sheets with our contact information, if the clerk wouldn't mind giving those to the new council members. Many Richmonders are, I did have extra copies, too. I'm very nervous in public speaking. Many Richmonders are looking forward to a vote on the chicken paper by council at the next formal meeting on the 28th of January, after over a year of having representatives from our group attend council meetings to plead our case for urban hens and report our progress back to our over 1,200 chickens members. I urge you to familiarize yourself with the urban hen ordinance, number 2012-226, and vote yes on the paper on January 28. Once again, if you have any questions or concerns regarding chickens, please reach out to us at chickens. We're happy to help, and we like talking about chickens. Thank you. A copy of these signed signatures of Richmonders is on file at the CIO's office. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Ms. West. Mr. Clerk, next speaker?
The next speaker is Kenneth Williams.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Clerk, next speaker?
I believe that that's all the speakers we have tonight, sir.
Mr., is Charles Willis on the list?
I believe Mr. Willis has weighed. Yes.
Very good. And Mr. Walker?
And Mr. Robert, I'm sorry, Richard Walker, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, other members of council. I greet you this evening. Information for you regarding bridging the gap in Virginia, but more importantly, I'm here representing the thousands of ex-offenders that currently reside and still returning to this community of the City of Richmond, that due to their past criminal convictions are having very much difficulty in obtaining employment. I'm here to appeal to you to set a precedent, not only for the City of Richmond, but for the state of Virginia, since this is the capital city of the state of Virginia, to work with me, with other organizations that are behind me, to ban the box for hiring practices. I'm wanting to believe that this council has already gone into discussion with that. I would love to believe that. I've spoken to a couple of council persons already who said that there's one or two patrons of this that will be willing to support this, to create this, to make this move within the city confines of the City of Richmond. It's been initiated throughout the country, more closely to the state of Virginia in Newport News, Virginia, where they have gone to council and it has been approved in the City of Newport News, and they've currently done that. This, it unfairly discriminates against people who have a criminal record. The unemployment rate for people coming out of prison is 70 to 90 percent currently. 10 or more percent of these people released from prison have nowhere to end up, become homeless, and ultimately add to the numbers of the homeless. It's causing social services more money, it's causing, it's losing tax dollars that could be revenues that could be coming to the city if they were gainfully employed, if they were hired. It is causing a disunity in the family structure that is creating a, you know, a mountain of other issues that where you have a child in school that is only with one parent because the dad is not allowed to live in that apartment complex that that parent is living in, that single mom is living in, that housing complexes discriminate against anyone that has a felony. Granted, they might have the income and they might have the employment, but because of their past felony conviction, you have to go some five years back. They do not have the ability to apply for housing like you and I may be able to. It's a travesty at this point. I applaud the governor, who recently has signed on to any legislature that is going to promote the abolishment for those nonviolent offenders, that they do not have to go through the process of having, putting in application to have their rights restored, that it'll be automatic restoration. It would be fitting, at this point in time, while the fire is hot, that the City of Richmond jump on that bandwagon to make it that much easier for ex-offenders to live in this community, to return back to home, to be able to become self-sustaining, to be able to be able to support their city, to be able to feel like they are members of this community. I get phone calls on a daily basis, individuals seeking employment, several council members have contacted me, how can I help?
Your time is over.
With individuals in their area.
Thank you so much, Mr. Walker. I appreciate your comments.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. President, now I believe that's the end of our citizen comment period.
Very good. Consent agenda, please.
Mr. President, the following items are on this evening's consent agenda. Item number three, ordinance number 2012-211, which is to amend the ordinance with authorizing special use of 2509 through 2511 Wyatt Street, 2510 Bangbridge Street, and 6567 and 71 West Compton Street for the purpose of authorizing certain renovations, too, and increasing the number of residents permitted in the adult care residence. Item number five, ordinance number 2012-234, and that's to amend City Code for the purpose of defining and regulating by conditional use permit nightclub uses in certain zoning districts. Item number six, resolution number 2012-R148, and that's to direct the Green City Commission to recommend to city council any legislation, plans, policies, and programs imposing mandatory green standards for the construction of city-owned buildings and facilities. And last but not least, item number seven, resolution number 2012-R158, and that's to amend, to approve an expenditure from the council district fund for the printing and mailing of newsletters to the second district. Mr. President, that concludes the reading of this evening's consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions from council on any of these items? Public comment? Anyone opposed or in favor of any of these items?
Good evening, Mr. President and all members of council. My name is Donald Hatcher, and I'm speaking on item number three. I'm a little tired of certain organizations calling themselves religious, who use religious names and all to run or to fund programs that they like, and in a lot of cases, those programs come in and they want to take up larger areas of the city, which should be sat aside for citizens who've been in this city for many years. There always has been a problem with people trying to do things, but it's been a lack of money and a segregated policy that... and a segregated policy that's been used in a lot of ways. I'd like to see this city start doing something to change the segregated policy towards Americans. I say Americans, I'm a little tired of the names that have been used for black folks. We are American citizens. And the foolishness that we are number three now in America and still are number two, got to be stopped. And I'm standing here tonight addressing that issue and I'm a little tired of the racism in America. We are some of the oldest citizens in America. We have contributed more to America than any citizen you can name. When you talk about Hispanics coming from 21 different countries and being used to outrank blacks as citizens, there's something wrong with this country. And you white folks are going to have to look up and address these problems. I've got to be 73 years old now and it hasn't been easy. There's always a black term in front of us. From now on, I'm going to address myself as an American, which I am. And the foolishness in America dealing with us has got to stop. You ain't bringing nobody from 21 countries. Bring them to America and treat them better than we, who was born and raised here and who built this country. And you white folks have received it all at no cost. It's a little...a little tiring to keep telling you white folks, "Well, you come down here, I've been in this council, and I've been told my hands are dirty, that I can't go into an area because it's for council people." The game's been put on me. I'm a little tired of it. I want you to know it. I ain't playing easy no more. I've got to be 73 years old. You keep playing all the dumb segregated games with me. I want you all to know, whoever in this city or anywhere else, bring it on. I'm ready for a fight. You can't treat me with decency and respect that every American is entitled to. Bring it on. I served on the front lines for two and a half years. There is no one no better deserving to stand up there and talk about being an American when the American soldiers that I served with wouldn't recognize me as an American. You think you got problems? I got some problems. I'm a little tired of foolishness. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Any other public comment for or against any specific paper?
Mr. President, members of council, Happy New Year to those that I haven't seen and welcome to those new council members that are doing the roster before me today. My name is Charles Willis and I come to you as a part representative of several nightclubs within the city of Richmond. Many of you all have seen me before council, before, speaking on behalf of those nightclubs. I don't want to say that I come in opposition to paper number five or item number five, but I do...maybe I need to apologize, Mr. President, for not attending the meetings. I thought that last time I was before council about the nightclub ordinance that I would be informed when meetings such as one that I found out pretty much at the last meeting of the Planning Commission that was taking place. So as I missed that meeting, which was held, I believe, last week, I looked forward for this item to be on the agenda for the Public Safety Committee. And I thought it was going before Public Safety. I was not aware until later on I found out that this paper was coming before you all today. So I'm a little disappointed and I'm going to point the finger at myself. Maybe if there's an opportunity that it would go back before Public Safety. I don't know if it was intended to just be one that was on the agenda for the Planning Commission and then go straight to you all then. If that's the new procedures, then fine. If I missed out, if it did go to the Public Safety Committee and I missed out, then that's my fault. But again, on behalf of those that I represent and others that probably are not aware, then I would try to make sure that I look through you all's agenda in the future and make sure I'm aware of that items like this that are so close to those that I represent are not overlooked. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity. And if there's any clarification, then I'll open it. But thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Any other folks in favor of who's anything on the consent agenda?
Opposed is...is that...is that...
Favor or opposed?
In favor, opposed, okay. My name is Chris Dorsey. I am opposed to everything on the consent agenda all the time. It's never really made clear to the public exactly what it is that's being bundled and voted for nearly every time unanimously. And I can't recall a time when the consent agenda hasn't been voted on unanimously with the caveat of, in some cases, some members of council may use a huge cop-out and say they're opposed to one or another thing that's going to be unanimously passed besides their abstention or opposition. In particular, I think it is very ironic that anything be mentioned on tonight's agenda in relation to Richmond being a green city because, as we or most of us know, I hope everyone on council knows, that the Redskins, the bum giveaway, sham theft Redskins and St. Mary's Hospital deal has already cost more in hundreds of years-old trees and money because of the destruction of trees. They've already screwed up the plan. In other words, that was a pile of garbage to begin with. Honestly, green city is just a euphemism. Nobody who gives you all money to run in council or the people pulling your strings, they don't give...they don't give a darn about Richmond being green. Dominion Power runs this government. Tom Farrell and Eva Taghardy, they control everything that y'all do. And they destroy the planet. That's what they do. And basically, you just signed away, you know, another huge check to multi-trillions and quadrillion-dollar entities like professional sports and the Roman Catholic Church. And what do they do? They knock down and destroy things they agreed not to that allow us to breathe air. You know, I know some people say that they eat, live, and breathe Redskins, but they don't truly do that. But we do actually breathe what the trees give us. So it's just ridiculous that anybody pretends to be green or pretends to give a darn about the people that they serve when basically you only serve a treasonous central banking cartel and you make a sham out of the Constitution that I saw all of you swearing oath uphold. And it's an absolute joke. So thank you very much for your time. Not thank you, council, but thank you, people.
Are there any others in favor or in opposition to any specific?
Good evening. My name's Silver Persinger. I'm a citizen in Richmond, Virginia. I would like to speak in opposition to...well, I would like to speak in opposition to item number five. It's nightclub ordinance. Because I think Mr. Willis is correct and that's the sole basis of my opposition is that I don't think this paper did go to a committee meeting. It said it on the O and R attachment with the paper. It said that it was requested to go to land use. I don't think it went there because meetings were canceled in December. And it is unusual for a paper to come before the council without having gone to a committee. And so that's the basis of my opposition. It's just a purely procedural one that council should follow the process, even though there's a transition of leadership right now. It is a 70-page paper and probably a lot of people in the nightclub industry may have not heard about it. So this would give them additional opportunity to weigh in on this topic. I go to nightclubs a lot. I enjoy live music. And I wouldn't want anything to happen that would endanger the clubs that I go to see live music. I think Ms. Membo at the informal session today said that this ordinance wouldn't affect existing nightclubs. But I don't know. I just think the more public inclusion and discussion you can get on this, which possibly a committee meeting would allow, would be beneficial. And I would like to speak in support of item number six to request the Green City Commission to recommend standards for construction of city-owned buildings. It sounds like there was some discussion because there's already something that requires it over a certain minimum size. But I think everything that the city of Richmond builds should be a green building. We should build things to last hundreds of years. And why not, right? Thank you for opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Persinger. Any others in favor or opposition?
I'll be brief. I'm speaking in favor of item number five.
White, would you mind identifying?
I'm sorry. I'm Brian White. The...just for point of clarification, this paper did go before the Planning Commission last week. I attended the meeting and it passed unanimously. The point of this paper is that the Commonwealth of Virginia puts the city of Richmond in a very difficult position and all of its cities in a difficult position by licensing restaurants for mixed beverage service. And it does not differentiate between a neighborhood eatery and a 3,000-person-capacity nightclub. And this paper allows the city to define what is and is a nightclub and therefore causes a very different kind of strain on city resources than perhaps a small restaurant would. It does not affect anybody existing. Only affects new businesses in certain zoning designations. And I hope the council will vote to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Are there any other members in favor? In fact, if there is anybody else in favor or opposition to anything, please line up behind this gentleman so we have an idea.
Thank you. Evening, council, Mr. President, members. I'm here to speak on behalf of item number three. My name is Mike Pyle. I'm the executive director of St. Francis Home, located at 65 West Clopton Street. Just to give you background, St. Francis Home, excuse me, is a ministry of the Catholic Diocese of Richmond, founded in 1973 to serve the needs of seniors and disabled persons with limited or no income. We currently maintain a three-year assisted living facility license from the Virginia Department of Social Services for 106 persons. Since our founding in 1973, we have expanded our capacity four times. This would be our fifth. Today, we are seeking a text-only amendment, excuse me, to increase our occupancy level from 106 to 136 residents. Over the past two years, our waitlist has averaged 12...excuse me, approximately 12 people. If approved, this amendment will allow us to meet the demand of our services, which has steadily increased over the past few years, especially because of the current macroeconomic struggles that the nation is experiencing. The two buildings that we intend to occupy were taken out of production in February 2010 after the completion of a $4.2 million wing, which we refer to as David Kuran Hall. We have also implemented changes requested by the Richmond City Building and Safety Department, including a new walkway leading from a porch to a city sidewalk, two additional handicap railings, AC emergency lights, additional coverage from our backup generator, and we recently purchased a new boiler for our residents. We expect to hire between two to four new staff persons. We have full support from our neighbors and are unaware of any opposition to our plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That ends citizen comment period. Bring it back to council for any discussion on these matters. Seeing none, call the question, Mr. Clerk.
Council is now voting on tonight's consent agenda, which consists of items number three, five, six, and seven. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Algelesko?
Aye.
Ms. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
And President Samuels?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we review the minutes and seek approval thereof?
The minutes to be approved for this evening are as follows. Monday, December 10th, informal Richmond City Council meeting; Monday, December 17th, special Richmond City Council meeting; and Thursday, December 27th, special Richmond City Council meeting. I don't need a motion for the approval of those minutes. Mr. Hilbert, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council is now voting on Mr. Hilbert's motion to approve the minutes as read. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Algelesko?
Abstention.
Okay. Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Mo...Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
And President Samuels?
Aye.
Those minutes have been approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are no other minutes of special meetings or any other meetings to review at this point?
Not at this time.
Wonderful. Reports and announcements of the members of council. Since Mr. Bilalz is new, I'm going to start on the other side and work our way around counterclockwise, or clockwise, from my perspective.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to just make a brief announcement. The first 7th District Community Meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 29th, from 6:30 until 8:30 p.m. at the East District Center, located at 701 North 25th Street. We invite all of the citizens of the 7th District, city of Richmond, to come out. Some of the agenda items that we'll address will include the 2013 Senior Real Estate Tax Relief Information update in terms of revitalization of the Nine Mile Road 25th Street commercial corridor, as well as an opportunity for citizens to weigh in in terms of priority for the upcoming budget session. So again, Tuesday, January 29th, from 6:30 until 8:30 at the East District Center, located 701 North 25th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to have a special meeting on Thursday, January 24th, at the Satellite, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Again, there will be a special 8th District meeting on January 24th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Mr. Marshall will be there to discuss things in our 8th District. Also, our Public Safety Meeting will be held on January 29th. That's on a Tuesday, January 29th, at 5:00 p.m. at the Police Academy. And everyone is welcome to attend and speak about issues with public safety. This right here is your free smoke alarm. If you call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, the firefighters will come to your house and they will install this smoke alarm for you for free. Don't cost nothing. And also, if it needs a battery, which I've been to a lot of houses and I've heard those smoke alarms beeping. And I want to thank Keith Andes for sending the firefighters out there to do... They canvass the area and if they need a smoke alarm, they put those smoke alarms up. And if they need a battery, they put the battery in there. This is free. It's about the only thing that's free right now in the city of Richmond. So take advantage of it because you never know when it's going to go away. So again, call 646-1526 and those firefighters will come to your house and they will install a smoke alarm. Also, you can go to the nearest fire station and ask them if they could, if they have time or if they can schedule to come out to your home and check your smoke alarms. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Mr. Hilbert?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little earlier in the agenda than I normally am, being moved over on the other side of the room. I'm trying to get oriented here, so... The...excuse me. On this Wednesday, at 5 o'clock, the Education and Human Services Committee will have our first meeting of this new council. And I want to welcome the vice chair and the other member and the alternate to the committee. These are all the new members of council and we look forward to their input. We will be discussing homelessness. Kelly Kinghorn from the Homeward, the Regional Continuum of Care, will be reporting on homelessness and the progress that's being made in that area. And we'll also have a report from Dr. Lanier from the Richmond Behavioral Health Authority. I also wanted to, excuse me, let everyone know that on Wednesday, January 23rd, we'll have our first meeting of the year for the 3rd District. It'll be held at 6 o'clock at Pine Camp. Excuse me, and that's on Old Brook Road, next to Henderson Middle... Middle School and John Marshall High School. We're going to be focusing on safety teams that serve the community, and we encourage everyone to come out and be those effective eyes and ears for your community. You know, we turned around crime in this city eight years ago because we made a determination that we were not going to hide in our homes anymore, that we were going to report crimes, and that the police would in turn protect the identity of people who called in, and that that trust would be built between the citizen and the police, and vice versa. And that worked pretty well. I am getting some reports of folks being uncomfortable with doing that again, and I can assure you that if that's the case, then we're going to see an increase in crime. So I really would encourage everyone to come out and report crime when you see it, because it wasn't, folks down here at City Hall did a great job, and certainly the police did, but it was the citizens ultimately that made the difference as to why we were able to bring down crime. So I'd encourage everyone to come to this meeting. And I also would like to welcome, we have had Gilpin Court in Newtown West in the Third District for six months now, and we look forward to their active participation in these meetings. Mr. Samuels, I'd also like to say, and I won't belabor this point, but extreme disappointment is mild here of my true feelings about what happened at the Redskin Training Facility today. Those of us that supported this measure went painstakingly to go through the details of it, and it is particularly concerning that right out of the gate, we tear down these trees. It's really outrageous, and I will be asking for a report as to how this happened and some prevention measures for it to happen again. I'm also asking that the trees be replaced by the size caliper of the tree, and not just a one-for-one replacement of the trees. For a matured tree that a sapling will do, I'm asking that all of these trees be replaced on a caliper basis, so that we'll have the same sized trees when taken into the aggregate as were destroyed. And I would ask that any member of the community that could step forward to help us with this, we'd certainly appreciate that as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. I couldn't have said it better myself. Mr. Algealasto?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I'm delighted to join the council. I think this is the first opportunity I've said to my colleagues here that I'm looking forward to four years of moving this city forward. At the same time, I want to make an introduction of Ida Jones, who I have hired as the Fifth District City Council Liaison. People in the district are going to get to know Ida very well, and I think I can say that they will be excited by her energy and efficiency, as I am. So thank you, Ida, for joining the team. We are working on some upcoming district meetings, and the first one that we've got scheduled is for February the 6th at 6:00 p.m., and this will be discussing the upcoming budget cycle and what the Fifth District residents would like to see and hear feedback from the city administration. Unfortunately, the capital improvement budget requests are due today, so we've been working a little bit more diligently to get that in before February the 6th, since the deadline is today. However, 6:00 p.m. location is to be determined, so stay tuned and we'll get communications to you shortly. We also have neighborhood associations and other groups in the Fifth District, and I encourage everybody in your community to get involved. There are plenty of opportunities, and you can really make a difference locally. And I try to attend as many of those meetings I can to be accessible. There's one meeting that's coming up in particular, that is, anybody from the Fifth District is invited to attend. It's a Citizen Action Team. That meeting will be February the 8th at 7:00 p.m. at the Bird Park Roundhouse. In addition to that, stay tuned, we're working on our communications. I know it's only been about 10 or 11 days since we were sworn in, so we're working on a newsletter and making sure that we get communications out beyond electronic Facebook and Twitter messages. So stay tuned, and I look forward to the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Algealasto. Ms. Mosby?
Yes, I too am looking forward to the next four years as well. I'm not that long-winded. I just want to say that our next meeting, well, our first meeting, will be February 21st at JL Francis. I am looking forward to my ideas for the district and finding out the district ideas that they may have, so that we can move the district forward. I am a very inclusive-type person. I believe that the only way that things work is through teamwork. So I will be looking forward to working with the Ninth District and the administration and the city to move things forward. And I think we have a great team, and I think it's going to go very well.
Thank you. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to remind everybody, Finance meets Thursday, January 24th, at 3:00 in council chambers. Also, I'm having two civic meetings. One is January 22nd, that's for the Civic Association Presidents in the Fourth District. That's going to be at the Positive Vibe Cafe, and that's at 7:00. And then, January 29th, we will have our quarterly district meeting at St. Luke's, and that's also at 7:00. And as Mr. Algealasto pointed out, although we have already had to put in our CIP requests, we will discuss some with the citizens in terms of priorities and what they want to look at being in the budget. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Graziano. Mr. Bilalz?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, just like to take a second and say it's an honor to be here. Almost five years ago, I started working here, but this is the first time on this side of the dais, and I'm looking forward to the next four years. Couple of meeting announcements. One is this Thursday at Mary Munford at 6:30 p.m. It's a meeting for Public Works, is working on improving crossing safety. So many parents and kids walk to Munford every morning. They'll be taking about 15 minutes to present a plan and then take parent and citizen input. Again, that's Thursday at 6:30, January 17th. January 23rd, 6:00 p.m., there will be a meeting about the future of the West Hampton School at St. Mary's that will be held in the auditorium. And the Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Committee will meet Tuesday, January 22nd, at 3:00 p.m. in this chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Bilalz. Vice President Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of announcements that I'd like to make that are not specific to the Sixth District. One is in regards to a conversation that we had earlier during the informal, where we talked about the legislative day on Wednesday, January the 23rd, at the General Assembly that is being coordinated by the Virginia Poverty Law Center, which is located at 701 East Franklin Street. They are recruiting citizens to join them with a day at the General Assembly to talk with our legislators in regards to expanding the Medicaid participation for the state. This is a very important day and a very important subject matter for us, and especially for us here in the City of Richmond, where our poverty level is extremely high, and this insurance provides an opportunity for us to expand more healthcare services. And so I want to give a notice to the citizens to put that on their calendar for January 23rd. The meeting place will be at the Virginia Poverty Center. Their number is 804-828-5804, and they will be convening at 8:00 in the morning at 701 East Franklin Street. Also, the, I want to thank all of the members that have served over the past 18 months on the Anti-Poverty Commission. We have finally finished our work in preparing our report. We will be making a final presentation of the report to the mayor this Friday at 11:00. I will get the council members other information on the place of that meeting, that has not been determined yet. But in addition to that, I've asked the president, if it is possible, likewise, we would like to make a full presentation to the council during the informal session on the 28th, where we have an opportunity to review the priorities of the report, as well as entertain questions of council members, and receive that report from the commission, followed with a formal presentation during the council meeting, if that fits into the agenda, Mr. President. Also, we had our first, we have had our first district meeting in the Sixth District as of Friday, I mean Saturday, the Saturday. And as a part of that meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion as it relates to the youth, the Eastview Initiative, that is a part of our current budget. The plan was to look at the renovation of a facility for the purpose of having more family and youth development services in the Eastview community. Some of those plans have changed, and we're in the process of looking at reprogramming that money. There will be a special meeting to address that on Saturday, January the 26th, and it's going to be called Less Play, because we want to get our children active and get them into processes of play that also addresses the social interaction that we need to have with our children, and that will be on Saturday, January the 26th, in the Eastview community from 12 to 4:00. Another announcement, we have the Mayor's Youth Academy extended its application process for our young people for jobs at Kings Dominion. That has been extended to Wednesday of this week to 5:00. Applications can be obtained through the Mayor's Youth Academy's website, as well as any of our high schools have application for our young people that are interested in a job with Kings Dominion. But the application has been extended only to 5:00, so I want to make sure that all of our, you know, we get the message out within our prospective district and notify our children of this opportunity. The next meeting in the Sixth District Town Meeting will be on February the 9th, and it will be at the Franklin Street Library. What's the address, Mr. Samuels?
It's the 200 block.
200 block of Franklin Street.
The entire south 200 block.
All right, that's it. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. That was so much fun, I'd like to do it again, but this time only for people that forgot something. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you. On Tuesday, January the 29th, when we have our next Public Safety Meeting, I've asked for us to look at the budget as far as putting a raise in for our police officers and our firefighters, and also for our retirees. So I want people to please come out to speak in reference to this, because we all know that our police chief has done an excellent job in the City of Richmond with public safety and also with community policing. This is something that our police chief has encouraged all over the city, not just in the Eighth District, but all over the city. He's encouraged neighborhood watches, he's encouraged the citizens to work with the police, and for those police officers to work with the citizens, and business owners, and with the pastors of all the different churches in our city. So I'm asking for us to look at this, and also for the chief to be there to see how we can give our police officers and our firefighters and our retirees some, a raise, because they've not had a raise in over four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Mr. Sam, Mr. President. I did not forget, merely misspoke.
Nice.
The Finance Meeting will be on January 17th at 3:00. That's the 17th, as in three days from now. Thanks.
Very good.
Mr. Samuels?
Vice President Robertson, tell me what you got.
I am sorry, I, no one, I couldn't think of the address. The next town meeting for the district will be on the 9th, but it will be at the library on Hall Street, which is at 1400 Hall Street. Thank you.
Very good. All right, well, that just leaves it to me then, unless there's any other amendments to folks' comments. Seeing none, I want to thank Mr. Hilbert again for his comments about the trees. It was a very frustrating day, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that. As this week goes on, there's a bunch of community meetings in the Second District coming up, starting tomorrow. Historic Jackson Ward will be meeting. They meet at Club 533, which is 700 North 3rd Street, and that starts at 6:00 p.m. There's others coming. I'm working on getting a Second District Facebook page back up and running. I'll try to post all the community events that's going on there. Second District will be having a budget meeting. Will include the mayor, myself, and other members of the administration. That's going to be on January 30th at 5:30. We're still working to nail down an exact location, but please save the date, January 30th at 5:30, for a council discussion, excuse me, for a district discussion on the council. I want to take an opportunity to welcome our three new members, Mr. Algealasto of the Fifth, Ms. Mosby from the Ninth, and Mr. Bilalz of the First. I'm excited to have you guys on board, and I'm really looking forward to the next four years of working together. I have one last thing to say, but I'm going to let Ms. Newbill say something that she clearly forgot to say earlier. Ms. Newbill? No, Dr. Newbill, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I would like to just certainly issue an invitation and a reminder for the Governmental Operations Committee meeting. The first one for this year will be Thursday, January 24th at 5:00 p.m., second-floor large conference room, and would invite all interested citizens to come out and join us for that meeting. Thank you.
That's wonderful.
Very appreciative, didn't want.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill.
Thank you.
Only last thing I have to say is this. The City of Richmond recognizes folks who have been with the city for a specific amount of time. And this afternoon, I was given a five-year pen in recognition of Ms. Trammell's new five-year stint, as she has been back with the city. And so I'm going to walk down here and give this to her. It's a little lapel pen that says, "The City of Richmond: Service and Loyalty, Five Years." Congratulations, Ms. Trammell. Having said that, may we please have the introduction of papers?
Mr. President, the introduction papers for this evening is as follows. Ordinance Number 2013-1, and that's to execute an agreement between Hataf Ventures, Inc., for the purpose of providing a temporary site for the East End Library at 3001 Nine Mile Road. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, January 17th. Council Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Item Ordinance Number 2013-2 to amend city code concerning taxicab rates for a trip originating at the Richmond International Airport. Public Safety, January 28th. Council Public Hearing Date, February 11th. Ordinance Number 2013-3 to accept $50,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the purpose of a Richmond MSA public outreach and educational project. Public Safety, January 28th. Council Public Hearing Date, February 11th. Ordinance Number 2013-4 to authorize a special use of 1815 and 1817 East Franklin Street for the purpose of a multifamily dwelling with up to 13 dwelling units. Planning Commission, February 4th. Council Public Hearing Date, February 11th. Ordinance Number 2013-5 to authorize a special use of 3600 Forest Hill Avenue for the purpose of permitting live entertainment and outdoor dining area, sorry. Council Planning Commission, February 4th. Council Public Hearing Date, February 11th. Ordinance Number 2013-6 to accept $25,000 from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for the purpose of developing a stormwater management program. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, January 17th. Council Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Ordinance Number 2013-7 to accept funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the purpose of appropriating to the fiscal year 2013 revenue sharing program for various projects. Planning Commission, January 22nd. Council Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Ordinance Number 2013-8 to amend the ordinance which authorized a special use of 508 Libby Avenue to authorize office use in the existing basement. Planning- Planning Commission, February 4th, Council Public Hearing Date, February 11th. Ordinance Number 2013-9 to close to public use and travel a portion of West 24th Street, North of Perry Street. Planning Commission, February 4th, Council Public Hearing Date, February 11th. Ordinance Number 2013-10 to adopt personnel rules for the classified service for classified employees of the city. Governmental Operations, February 28th, Council Public Hearing Date, March 11th. Pursuant to City Code Section 2-1207B of the City Code, the council refers this ordinance to the Personnel Board for a public hearing to be held within 30 days of its referral and requests the Personnel Board to forward the city council and mayor's comments and recommendations regarding the proposed personnel rules. Ordinance Number 2013-11 to authorize a special use of 4030 MacArthur Avenue for the purpose of permitting an outdoor dining area and expansion of the existing building. Planning Commission, February 4th, Council Public Hearing Date, February 11th. Resolution Number 2013-R8 to establish a policy that's a patron of a proposal that would result in the reduction of an existing revenue source must also identify an alternative resource, revenue source to offset the proposed reduction, and proposals that result in the reduction of an existing revenue source must be introduced only during the council annual budget process. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, January 17th, Council Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R9 to approve the plan of financing for the Capital Region Airport Commission for the purpose of financing and refinancing expansions and improvements and extensions to the Richmond International Airport. Land Use, Housing and Transportation, January 22nd, Council Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R10 to approve an expenditure for the Council District Fund for the 6th District to make a donation to Camp Diva's Dad, Date with Dad Dinner and Dance. Council Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R11 to approve an expenditure from the Council District Fund for the 3rd District to make a donation to Camp Diva Date with Dad Dinner and Dance. Council Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R12 to approve an expenditure for the Council District Fund for the 6th District to provide catering for the 6th District's award ceremony. Council Public Hearing Date, January 28th.
Resolution Number 2013-R13 to appoint Allison Bogdanovic as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Advisory Board, experienced in managing affordable and mixed-income multi-residential, multifamily residential properties, for a term terminating upon the fulfillment of the advisory board's duties. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R14 to appoint Andrea Allman as a member of the Urban Design Committee for a term terminating January 28th, 2016, succeeding Luigi Lignardi. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R15 to appoint Angela Brown as a member of the Clean City Commission, citizen representative for a term terminating January 28th, 2015, succeeding John A. Hewlett, Jr. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R16 to appoint Angie S. Hemming as a member of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks for a term terminating January 28th, 2016, succeeding William Pace. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R17 to appoint Angie S. Hemming as a member of the Clean City Commission for a term terminating January 28th, 2015, succeeding Catherine Rother. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R18 to appoint Brian K. Jackson as a member of the Auditet Mini Lawyer Representative for a term terminating, excuse me, January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution 2013-R19 to appoint Carol A. Murphy as a member of the Clean City Commission, 8th District Representative, for a term terminating January 28th, 2015, succeeding Mary D. Thomas. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R20 to appoint Catherine M. Welsh as a member of the Clean City Commission, citizen representative, for a term terminating January 28th, 2015, succeeding Frank Delott. Council's Public Hearing Date, March 28th. Resolution 2013-R21 to appoint Gary Huff as a member of the Clean City Commission, 5th District Representative, for a term terminating January 28th, 2015, succeeding Kevin M. Stokes. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R22 to appoint Giles Hansenberger as a member of the Urban Design Committee, Citizen at Large, for a term terminating January 28th, 2016, succeeding Sarah Driggs. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R23 to appoint J. Alex Fisher-Risk as a member of the Capital Area Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board for a term terminating January 28th, 2015, succeeding the Honorable Thomas O. Jones. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution 2013-R24 to appoint Johnny Allen as a member of the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority, alternate member for a term terminating January 28th, 2017. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R25 to appoint Michelle Member as a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board, Richmond Circuit Court Judge Designee, for a term terminating January 28th, 2015. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R26 to reappoint Andrea L. Allman as a member of the Urban Forestry Commission, Certified Landscape Architect, for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R27 to reappoint Ann Gordon-Greaver as a Director of the Economic Development Authority, Attorney Representative for the city of Richmond, for a term commencing upon the adoption of the resolution and terminating January 28th, 2017. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R28 to reappoint C. Nelson William IV as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals, General Division, for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R29 to reappoint Carl W. Jackson as a member of the Personnel Board, Classified Services Representative, for a term terminating January 28th, 2018. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R30 to reappoint Charles L. Crenshaw, Jr. as a member of the Minority Business Enterprise and Emerging Small Businesses Advisory Board, Section 3 Contractor Representative, for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R31 to reappoint Clarence N. Jenkins, Jr. as a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board, Richmond Circuit Court Judge Representative, for a term terminating January 28th, 2015. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R32 to reappoint James Snowa as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals, General Division, for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R33 to reappoint James H. Starkley III as a member of the Board of Directors of Lewes Inter-Bitanical Gardens, for a term terminating January 28th, 2017. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R34 to reappoint Joel Coase as a member of the Urban Forestry Commission, Certified Arborist, for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R35 to reappoint Lawwanda Shawthrew as a member of the Personnel Board of the city of Richmond, Classified Services Representative, for a term terminating January 28th, 2018. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R16 to reappoint Lynn McAtier as a member of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R37 to reappoint Lynn McAtier as a member of the City Planning Commission for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R18 to reappoint M. Jane Hotchkiss as a member of the Clean City Commission, 2nd District Representative, for a term terminating January 28th, 2015. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R39 to reappoint Matthew D. Elms as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R40 to reappoint Stacy J. Williams as a member of the Richmond Ambulance Authority for a term terminating on January 28th, 2015. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R41 to reappoint Thomas K. Davis as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals, General Division, for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R42 to reappoint Tracy G. Jeter as a member of Minority Business Enterprise and Emerging Small Business Advisory Board for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R43 to reappoint William P. LaFune as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals, General Division, for a term terminating January 28th, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R44 to appoint Ernesto V. Sampson as a member of the Local Community College Board for J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College for a term terminating June 30th, 2017, succeeding Robert E. Comment, Jr. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Resolution Number 2013-R45 to reappoint Alma M. Moore as a member of the Richmond Behavioral Health Authority for a term terminating January 1, 2016. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. And last but not least, Resolution Number 2013-R46 to approve an expenditure in the amount of $500 from the Council District Funds for the 2nd District to make a donation to Camp Diva Date with Dad Dinner and Dance on March 17th, 2013. Council's Public Hearing Date, January 28th. Mr. President, that is all of the new legislation for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Provided there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.
And a little less than an hour and a half tonight. How about that with our brand-new city council? We started out at 6:02, call to order. All members were present, including our three newest members, Jonathan Blouse from the 1st District, Parker Agelasto from the 5th District, and Michelle Mosby from the 9th District, and our new presiding president, Charles Samuels, from the 2nd District. Got to the awards and presentations very quickly. The only one we had tonight was Ralph White, who after 32 years is retiring from the city. He has been most recently been the James River Park Systems Manager. And he retired at the end of the year, 32 years in service to the city. Then we got to the review of the agenda items and amendments. There were no items on the regular agenda. Got right to the citizens' comment period, and from there to consent agenda, which was approved in about, oh, I'd say 20 minutes by a 9-0 vote. Got to the approval of minutes, report from council members. Then we got to the introduction of papers, which probably took about as long as anything tonight, because there were 48 items being introduced. Now, a lot of those are appointments and reappointments, so they'll be in the very beginning of our next meeting, which will be on July 28th. So, once again, welcome to our new council members. Welcome back to our previous continuing council members, and welcome back to our audience out there after being gone for just about a month. We'll be back, though, in two weeks on January 28th